Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 22 Revere City Council Meeting. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Agenzio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Janino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Grino Sawaya.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Hermio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Niboselski. Is absent Counselor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Counsel President Cogliano.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of June 24. Calendar item number three, Tom O'Brien, CEO of H Y M, will appear before the City Council to provide an update on the development of Suffolk Downs.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom O'Brien. I'm a resident of Boston, Massachusetts.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. How would you like me to begin? Do you want to kind of give an update? Or what would be the best way to begin? I could, I'm happy to do that.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you. So I invited you up here because from newspaper articles that have been written in the past, it just said that one of the things that we were concerned on as a council was the halt of your project, which I know it's not true, but I just, we, this is what we want to hear. You know, we want to hear about the articles that were written, and we want to hear about your, the progress of your project.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKenna. I'm happy to do that, and also happy to take questions from people if you'd like. So let me start by saying a couple of things. The article that was in the Globe, as I think I pointed out to many of you who I spoke to by phone, the article in the Globe itself, if you read the body of the article, it's almost exactly word for word of what I said when I appeared before you a month or so ago. I can't explain how the newspaper business works, but the, but the, the people who write the headlines for articles write a different headline than the people who actually are the writers of the articles themselves. So the headline didn't match up with anything that we said, and it certainly doesn't match up with anything of how we're operating. So let me just state more clearly, absolutely, that the entire project is moving forward. I'm here accompanied by my partner Doug Mans. We have a whole team of people at H Y M who work on this project every single day. We're advancing the project as actively and as aggressively as we possibly can. If I can just use that to kind of, as a jumping off point, give a little bit of an update even to where I was a month or so ago with you. So folks will remember that we opened the, the first group of units at the Amaya project. We call Amaya the first building that's at Beauchamp. That building is about 475 units in total when complete. The first group of units, approximately about 190 units, have been completed and are available for leasing. We've leased over 50 units. So if you step back on the 475 units, just in the last few weeks that we've done some leasing, we've leased over 10% of the units. So the leasing has gone very, very well. There are people moving in there now, so there are, for the first time, this, you know, abandoned horse racing track with the, those, that, that site everybody remembers was the, the site of the, the horse barns. For the first time, there are people living there, which is really terrific for us. We feel great about that. So that building has continued to do very well. The units, the schedule of the delivery of those units continues. So there are now, another chunk of units will be delivered toward the end of this summer, and then the final chunk of units will be delivered in November of this year. So the final group of units in the building, you know, will be fully, fully available for leasing by Thanksgiving of, of this year, which we feel great about. In addition to that, we did a tour last week with members of the, of the Beauchamp Improvement Association. Thanks very much, Counselor McKenna, for connecting us with the, the Beauchamp Improvement Association. And we did a, a great tour with people, walked them through the building. I think people were really pleased with that, and we'll, I would extend that invitation to everybody here, together with whatever constituents or anybody you'd like. We honestly, we're happy to tour the building. We're very proud of it. We're really proud of the work that we've done, and so we'd love, I'd invite everybody to come to see the building with us. A couple of quick things, just if you've driven by, you can see that the exterior pieces of the, kind of the open space and the hard space is still being completed. The, I would divide that into kind of two big pieces. So one is the hardscape that's immediately in front of the building, kind of on the path toward the MBTA station. That piece of outdoor space should be delivered sometime in the next few weeks, around the end of July. So, so we've got nine days left, I guess, in July, so, you know, sometime in the next two weeks. And then the final piece, which is the sort of table topping and the direct entrance into the MBTA, that should be completed by the end of this summer, which is, which is great. The other key thing I would say is, is an update on the retail. We talked a lot about that. There was a lot of interest in that among the Beauchamp Improvement folks, and so we, we did quite a bit of a discussion and update on the retail. There are nine slots, approximately nine slots in that first building. Of the nine slots, we have letters of intent out to retailers for each of those nine slots. So a letter of intent is kind of the first step towards securing a lease. Of that group, I would say, a chunk of them, probably three or four, are advancing pretty quickly toward the lease stage, the first of which hopefully we'll be able to announce, you know, sometime soon, certainly, I think, before the end of the summer, which we, we feel really great about. And that would be a combination of some food and ability for people to, to eat out and, and, you know, come to the building. We're, we're trying to remember, our goal with the entire site is to take this abandoned horse racing track and make it a place that is popular for people to want to come to, to be there. So, A, we want them to live there. We want everybody here to take advantage of the retail. We want everybody here to take advantage of the open space. We want it to be a very public place. And in addition to that, we want then to use that activity of bringing people to the site to create commercial activity. So once we, once we make this a place where people want to be, a place where there's retail and open space and people living there, then we feel comfortable, we can make it a place where companies will want to be, which will allow us to build the, the commercial buildings, which is, you know, the key objective. That's why we do the music venue. That's why we have, you know, all the different festivals that we do, all the different things that we've, we've tried to do to activate the site. If I could now switch a little bit to the topic that we talked about last time, which is the next building. So the next building is another 475 units. It's literally across the street. Now, we built a new street that's in front of Amaya, so that's called Salt Street. And so literally across the street from that is a site. You can see it prepared and ready to go. It's kind of fenced in for what we, a building we call Portico. That building also is 475 units, also has first full of retail, and fronts the, the parks and all those pieces. That building is designed and ready to go. We've actually filed the building permit application with the Building Department here in the city, and so that building literally is ready to go as we seek to get the financing lined up. You recall that last time I spent this session with you, one of the key topics was, we're working carefully with the members of the building trades unions to try and get costs lined up so that we can help them meet their obligations under a project labor agreement that they signed with a general contractor on the site. So we're working very carefully. We've actually made some really good progress. We've, I feel really good about where we are on that, and so we're close, probably in the next couple of weeks, to being able to come back and give a positive report on that. We, you know, have had a number of, I don't want to give too much away, we've had a number of the individual building trades themselves line up with us and begin the process of us being able to kind of make awards generally and start the train moving on, on that whole process. In addition to that, we'll need, we'll probably be back before you to talk about the implementation of a state infrastructure project, infrastructure program, I'm sorry, that, that we can take advantage of to help us with that project as well. More on that later. I'm happy to, to come back at some point in the future and talk that through. And then there's, you know, hopefully a, a twofold piece, which we hope to deliver for you this year. One is a grand opening of that Amaya building, which will happen in the fall, and a groundbreaking for the next building, the Portico building, which will also, we expect will happen in the fall as well. Those are the big updates for me. I have some other pieces that we work ahead on, but honestly, we're just not ready to announce those yet, but, but, you know, let me assure you, Counselor, as I said, I think publicly to the Revere Advocate, the headline of that article in the Globe was just not correct. The body of the article matched up with what I just said about trying to line up costs and trying to get ourselves ready to go for that project. But the other pieces are moving ahead, and we feel really good about the prospects of the site, same way we did. Can I add one other quick thing? I'm sorry, Counselor McKenna. One other point I, I tried to make a number of times, and I, I said it when I was here before, people should understand that at this point, the combination of the work that we've done on the site, all the infrastructure that we've built so far, that new building that we've built, the investor group, including us, have put about $600 million into the site. So over half a billion dollars into the site. And to us, what that means is nobody's walking away from this thing. This is, we're working very hard every single day. The objective is to move it at a fast pace. But it's a big site, and over the course of a 15-year buildout, there will be recessions. And unfortunately, right now, in the last 18 months or so, the real estate business is in recession. So we're working our way through it. This is probably the fourth recession I've had in my career, and, you know, the, the one thing I can tell you, every time I've experienced a recession, the world has come back out the other side. The United States has continued to be the great country that it is, and we work our way back into building these projects. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions or anything that people may have.
Thank you.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. O'Brien. So I just want to clarify, so Phase 1 and the 1R extension consists of total of eight buildings. One of the eight has been completed so far, the building that you just mentioned. That's correct. You have a foundation permit pulled for the Biolab and another building, what you just mentioned, correct? The building that you said?
So, I'll have to go back and tally up what, what we identified as Phase 1R. I'm not sure if there are eight buildings in that or not, but I'll, I'll stipulate that if you, if you've read that from the, the plan, that may be correct.
Yeah.
We did pull a foundation permit for a, a building that is next to Amaya, which would be a life sciences building, if I could just describe it that way, Counselor. That's what, that's what these are. Could be a combination of academic and, and, and research-related use, as well as some manufacturing in that building. We actually dug the hole and started the foundation. We, I would say toward the end of '22 and the beginning of '23, when it became clear that interest rates were going to go up, like the entire market in greater Boston, we paused that building. Good news is, we completed the design, we've invested a ton of money in that building, and that's ready to go. When the market gets better, that's ready to go.
Okay.
That would be, can I just make a, one quick statement, Counselor? That would be the first time, I think, in the history of this city, that a building of that size and that scale and that potential commercial tax payment would ever be built in the city, and we would be proud to take that on.
Right. From, well, from what I understand, and I, I went back and looked at a lot of the presentations that were done initially, and from looking at those, it was my understanding that the Biolab was really going to be somewhat of an anchor for this development. And my concern is that the market for Biolabs has, at this point, basically tanked. For instance, that Boston Globe article did mention the Newton Riverside Biolab project, which has been on hold since 2022. And I'm also aware of another Biolab on Rutherford Ave in Charleston that is close to completion but will be sitting empty without a tenant. So in light of all of this, the Biolab is on pause for right now, but when you begin to build that Biolab again, and when we're out of this, are you going to, do you intend to build it as originally planned, or will that be somewhat modified, or?
Again, Counselor, I would refer to the building as a life science building. That's, you know, these are buildings in which some of the, the life-changing drugs and treatments are, are currently being created for people who are survivors of cancer, for people who are survivors of all kinds of, of different disorders. This is an amazing thing, and for us in, in Boston, I've been around long enough, Counselor, to know that in the very beginning, that, that business started in Kendall Square at MIT, and it was really headquartered around MIT. And for many years, for a long time, those companies would not be located anyplace else. Suddenly, in the last, I would say, five to 10 years, those companies decided that they could be located elsewhere, and so they went to places like Watertown, they went to places like Lexington, they went to places like Alston. And we looked at it, and we said, why not Revere? Why not Revere? Why can't these jobs? Why can't this commercial tax revenue? Why can't that come to this city? There's nothing wrong with that from our perspective. And so, yes.
But unfortunately, it's on pause now because the market for it is not, is not what it was.
Because all those, because all those communities are seeing their projects on pause.
Okay.
But we're prepared, but Counselor, if I could just finish this one thing, we're prepared to take on that project again. It's not, I wouldn't say that that's the keystone, or however you refer to it. The key to the site, as I said to you, is to make this a place where people want to live, come to a concert, come to a meal, because that's what then is going to make it a campus for these life science companies. That's where they want to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Young employees want to be in these places that are fun, interesting, exciting places.
Thank you.
And we're going to create that.
And I understand, I mean, to me, after viewing the, and touring the site on my own, I can understand why the Globe article was written, because when I drove the site a couple of times during the week, I didn't see any large excavators digging new foundations. I didn't see any large dump trucks moving material. I didn't see any concrete trucks delivering concrete. The only thing I saw was one large excavator, which was parked, two medium-sized front-end loaders, which were also parked, and the only work I observed was the finishing touches being done on the existing Amaya building. So I can understand why someone would get that impression that there's no work going on there, because I myself went by the site two different times during the week and didn't see any myself.
Well, that's because, Counselor, as I've said, now the second time, we're trying to get the second building underway. As I pointed out, that building, as you know, we've completed the streets. We've spent tens of millions of dollars on infrastructure on the site. Okay? So the fact that you could drive down a road, if I could just point out, that road is a completed road, together with all of the below-grade materials that make it a completed road, water, sewer, electrical, everything else that makes that a completed road. We built that road. It's not just a, it's not just a temporary road, that will be the permanent road. So we built that road ready to go. We've fenced in that site. We've labeled it, and I think we have a sign on it that says Portico, okay? And we're trying to get to a point where we can get to a groundbreaking. If we can get the costs lined up, we have a plan that will allow us to get that building underway, and then we'll have a ton of trucks on the site, and I would invite you to come back. Anytime you want to come visit, by the way, Counselor, I'm happy to meet you and point out all these things, you know, directly with you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And I, I almost, and I don't know, you may have said this yourself, I'm not sure, but I think it's pretty much common knowledge, and it's fair to say that since COVID, construction materials, cost for the construction materials have increased by approximately 30 to 40%. And the Boston Globe article stated that you need to keep cost per unit to around $350,000 in order to secure a deal with your investors. In order to meet that goal, you are working to simplify architecture and cut back on amenities. So is it fair to say then that these residential units will not be the original upscale residential units that were initially discussed and presented to the city?
I would invite you, Counselor, to come see the Amaya building with us. We built that building, we're very proud of it.
Well, future buildings.
Can I just finish? It's a beautiful building. The design for the next building is better than that design, okay? It's going to have different sets of, it's, it, come, come see it with me. It has a higher.
Well, no, then I'm just curious as to why you would say you were simplifying architecture and cutting back on amenities, if that's the case.
I, I don't think I said, I'm, I'm not sure where you read that in the Globe.
That's in the Globe article.
Yeah, so the Globe wrote that, but I'm, I'm not, that's not what I said, okay? There might be somebody else in that Globe article. The thing I pointed out to you, Counselor, when we spoke on the phone is.
I have the article here.
The person who writes that material, Counselor, is writing it from a variety of different conversations. There might be other people who are cutting amenities, there might be other people who are doing, you know, that sort of thing. But for us, what we're trying to do is to make this a very special site. So the task for us is, you're right, there is a structural cost issue in our market right now. The cost of materials has gone up by about 30%. That's probably about right. The cost of labor has gone up by, you know, X percent. That's probably about right. I would say the mixture of materials and labor represents about two-thirds of the cost of building a building like this at the end of the day. So we're trying to work on, can we take a different approach? Can we, can the building trades work with us to live up to their, what they committed to in the, in the project labor agreement? Can we pre-buy materials? Can we pre-build materials? Is there a way that we can take advantage of the size of the site? That's what we're working on right now.
Okay. And then, lastly, the Boston Globe article mentioned that mass housing may be creating a momentum fund that would be used to help fund mixed-income housing developments. The proposal is actually included in the Housing Bond Bill before the legislature at this time. It's proposing approximately $300 million for the fund. Do you intend in any point in time, or do you foresee this development ever changing to a mixed-income housing development in order to be a recipient of these funds?
No.
If that bill passes? Never. You don't ever see that happening?
I mean, never is a big word, Counselor, but I, I don't anticipate that, no.
You don't anticipate?
What's been permitted is, as a project, this council, this body, we spent two years with this body, working our way through the process, and there were two important things that the council made clear to us. One is, the council said, we're okay with you producing residential units to bring people to the site, but we want that to happen from the perspective of trying to create commercial buildings. That was the first and most important thing that the council said to us. The second thing the council said to us was, we want to make sure that these units are going to be market-rate units. And so we permitted this project with those two pieces in mind. So 50% of the project is for market-rate units, 50% is for commercial space, hotels, retail and the like, in commercial buildings, and that's what's been permitted, and that's what we're going to build.
Okay. Was, was there any type of a performance clause that you entered into with the city?
I'm not sure what that would be. What do you mean a performance clause?
In terms of, you know, percentages of work completed by certain dates?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, Counselor, basically, there are, there are pieces that are linked together. So for example, when we, you know, we build X amount of residential, then we must have started Y amount of, of commercial. I'm happy to kind of, as I, as I've offered a couple of times, Counselor, I'm happy to meet with you, happy to sit with you, happy to walk you through all these different pieces. I've done that with a lot of the other members here, so I'm happy to kind of walk you through that if you'd like.
Thank you. All set. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Tom, for coming up tonight. And, you know, the, the article was, was very, you know, it, it hit everyone like it should, you know? It was very worrisome. And, and I actually spoke with members of the union trades throughout the past week, some very excited about the progress that has been made and look up to working with you and, and moving forward. I, I guess the, towards the line of questioning what, what Counselor Kelly suggested, and the big number in the, the article was, was 10,000 units will not be built. Is there any truth to that?
No. I mean, we, we permitted this, we, you know, we, we knew what we were getting into. We believe that the demand is out there, certainly for 10,000 units of, of housing. The one, one thing I would say, Counselor, is we feel really good, you know, one of the things that, that happened in the month of March, I think it was, March or April, was we changed general contractors, and I sort of reported that to you folks. And so the general contractor that we're working right now, Suffolk Construction, has been terrific. They worked very hard, and what we needed was a data-driven process. We need a group of people who would work with us and walk through and put to a spreadsheet, you know, exactly what we needed, each of the individual building trades to, you know, to match up with. And we have that. And so that has allowed us to make progress. And, you know, I think, remember, part of what we're doing here, part of the premise about that whole thing, this is really an exciting premise. I apologize if I'm turning too, too far this way, but the, the exciting premise here was none of the buildings that have been built in Revere, residential buildings that have been built in Revere, have been built on a wholly-union basis. And, and our, our premise is, we think this is a city in which the unions can fight for and build these buildings. And what needs to happen is, the pie needs to be expanded, and we can do that by creating kind of a residential approach and a residential rate and a residential set of work rules that will allow more residents of Revere, more younger people to be part of the building trades, to be, you know, to be part of this, and we're expanding the pie so that we can make it possible for projects that are built in Everett, that are built in Revere, for those to be built on a union basis, which is how they're built in Boston, but somehow that, you know, doesn't extend across the border to Revere. So that's, that's our objective, to, to make this happen. That's what we're trying to do. And we, you know, it's taken a lot of work, but we believe in it. It's a, it's something, it's a principle that we, that's how we started this whole process, and that's why we want to get there. And that's, I think there are a group of leaders who really want to make that happen with us, which we're excited about.
Absolutely. And just.
And with that, then we can roll, and we can build 10,000 units of housing. I'm sorry, Counselor.
No, no problem. I, I appreciate it. And just one more with the, the jobs and, and with the unions. If you could please just try to, to ensure that, that they're reaching out to Revere Labor as well and making sure Revere residents are on that site, because I think that was a big piece that, that we were looking for, and we want to make sure our residents are getting on that site as well.
Yeah, you may remember, Counselor, we did a number of job fairs, beginning in '22, I think, '21 or '22, and we actually, from the job fairs, we were able to, we, we had great turnout at these job fairs. Remember, people would came, you know, some of you here have been to these job fairs. Thanks, Counselor McKenna. I mean, so, so we get great turnout from Revere residents, particularly young people who, you know, were looking for a new opportunity, some, a different direction in life, you know, whatever that is. We, we were very careful to sign those people up, and some of those people worked on the Amaya project. I mean, it was, I mean, they were already on-site, you know, working on that project. So that's, that's exactly how we're trying to make this work, is connect people in, get them trained, get them on the, the job. It's a great path, a great career path.
Thank you, Tom, and I, I think it's, it's up to us as well, you know? So whatever we can do to help to move this project along, you know, we got to do this as a team to make it work in our city, so.
I really welcome that, Counselor. That's kind of, you know, that's my major theme is, please come visit, you know, whatever I can do to help you with all the things that you're pressed, but, you know, I'd love to tell you what we're doing. It's, it's exciting.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Tom, for being here tonight. I am the longest-serving city councilor in this room tonight. So, and I say that because I want to go over some history, history of your project. Everybody knows I'm a cheerleader for this project, and I say publicly that this is the best development the city of Revere is ever going to get. So now I want to go back to the original proposal. Now, before I do that, there's a lot of talk about 10,000 units, and I don't want my residents of Revere to be scared for 10,000 units. I think the maximum is 2,500 in Revere. Is that correct?
So the number in Revere, I think, is 20? Yeah, yes, correct.
Okay. I just want that all publicly, because every time I read an article, it's 10,000 units, and, and everybody thinks that means Revere.
In simplest terms, when we started the process, Revere wanted more commercial space and less residential. Boston wanted more residential and more, and less commercial.
Right. I know that, and I'm getting to that, because I was part of that, obviously, and, and I And, and I was thrilled that we ended up on a deal that we were going to get 50% commercial.
Yes.
Now, I want to go back on a little more history here. The original project did not include life science. Is that correct?
Well, I think, yeah, that's correct.
It might have in your head, but I'm saying the proposal that was put before the city council, it wasn't the anchor of, of the project was not life science.
Could I explain it real quick?
Go ahead.
Just, so, first of all, it's not the anchor of the project, if I could, but the, when we, when we purchased the site in 2017, the market was sort of a fast-moving market. And, and forgive me, but it was probably my, sort of the way I was grounded in this business, I came up through the business knowing that life science building, life science companies wanted to be in Kendall Square. That's where they, and, and honestly, remember, when we started this, we were the developers of what's now called Cambridge Crossing. It was then called North Point. When we bought that in 2010, we couldn't get any of those companies to come even out of Kendall Square, as close as that is to East Cambridge. They wouldn't come, they thought it was too far to come to us at North Point, right? So, we looked at it, and we said, "I'm just not sure we're going to get somebody, you know, at Suffolk Downs." Honestly, just being completely direct on this. But as the world evolved, and as these companies started to go to Watertown, as they started to go to Al, we built the building in, in Austin that set this all in motion with the New Balance campus. We did, we developed that building, together with the Bruins Practice Facility, which was way more fun to work on that than the life science building. But the, so we did all that work. And as we did that, we realized, you know what? This is possible for Revere. And, and I, you know, respectfully, if I can, to anybody who's listening to this, this would be huge for Revere. For us to get, you know, a Fortune 500, life science company, companies like Pfizer, the, the project I just described for you at, at North Point, okay, we couldn't get anybody to come over and even look, they wouldn't even visit the site. Today, Sanofi North America is based at North Point. They're, they're based at that site that we put together. And so, Doug and I and our team, we looked at one another and said, "This is possible for Revere. We could make this happen." It would produce a tremendous amount of value, a tremendous amount of commercial tax revenue, and great jobs. These are jobs, the other thing that, if I could just point out, people need to understand, I know that there's a lot of talk about the PhDs and the people who actually do the science, but the basic jobs of the people who develop this, this work, these are, for the most part, high school graduates who then earn a certificate in this work. So, they put on a lab coat and all the rest of it, but these are people who don't necessarily need a college degree. They just need to be certified as lab technicians. And those people then get paid 75, 80, 90, $100,000. This is, these are great jobs. And, and honestly, for us, as, if I could, just one more thing, for us as a region, there are other regions in the country that would love to steal these jobs from us. North Carolina would love to steal these jobs from us. They're working at it right now. California would love to steal these jobs for us. And this site, Suffolk Downs, is going to play a role in helping to, to hold on to these jobs and to hold on to these companies. And so, we're proud to, to be part of that, and, and honestly, I'll defend it, you know, in any conversation councillor.
Great. But the bottom line is that it couldn't be a better site for something like that with the transportation, the blue line. I mean, these are things that people overlook and-
Because those employees are young people, and they're, they're young people, that's exactly what we're trying to do. Those young people, they want to go to, what's a fun restaurant? What's a cool place to be? How about a cool outdoor concert venue? How about a cool, you know, and those people then go home and they, or go to work, and they talk to their boss, and they say, "Hey, have you guys ever thought about being located at Suffolk Downs?" And that's how we make those transactions work.
Okay. Just, thanks for the leeway, Mr. President. I won't go on forever here. Can you explain what a project labor agreement is?
Sure.
Because a lot of people are confused about that, and, and I heard, I heard mention of a, a performance bond. I look at a project labor agreement as a performance bond, that the contractor is going to deliver what they're supposed to deliver, and that's the commitment you make by spending more money to have a project labor agreement, because there's not a lot, people don't enter into a lot of project labor agreements. At least they didn't in the years I was in construction, because of the cost and, and the commitment it takes to do that. So, if you could explain that to the audience, so they'll know what, what it is, and what it is when it isn't met.
Yep. Most private projects don't have project labor agreements. That's correct. So, but well, our objectives were, were two or three-fold. The first is, we wanted predictability in the project. So, we, as a company, pretty much everything that we've developed as a company, everything we've built as a company, has been built with the, the Boston Building Trades. Even in Cambridge, when we built our buildings in Cambridge at the North Point site, which wasn't technically part of the union, you know, sort of trade area, we built a project, you know, while right across the street, there were other developers who built non-union projects. We built union projects. That's how we've always built it. Because what we get from that is the predictability of trained people, members of, men and women of the building trades who show up on-site, they understand safety, they understand, you know, how to operate in a, a safe manner, predictable manner, all those things. That's, we like that, okay? In addition to that, that has also helped us build relationships with union pension funds that have been investors in our projects, which is another, you know, key piece for us. With this particular project labor agreement, this particular project labor agreement was signed by the contractor for us at the beginning of this, John Moriarty and Associates, and all the members of the building trades. So, all, I think it's 28 different members of, of the building trades, every single one of them signed that, that project labor agreement. And there were, you know, again, two or three different pieces to it. One is, there's a no-strike clause. So, again, we get the predictability, once we build the building, once we get going with the building, we want to be able to build it, you know, on schedule. So, there's a no-strike clause. There's a, a clause that says, the, the expectation is that the trades will find their way either through the establishment of a residential rate, or the use of other union funds will help us get to a cost that is, makes the project financeable. That's the other key piece. And in addition to that, we, together with the trades, this is the third key piece, would work together to expand the opportunities for new, young, you know, newer young people to join the trades, particularly residents of Revere, particularly residents of East Boston, particularly young women and people of color. Those were, those were key objectives for us, to make that happen. And so, the, the project labor agreement was signed five years ago, between the, that general contractor and all of the unions. Unfortunately, you know, in the five years, the financing environment was, was pretty friendly, and so, people didn't really push to, you know, achieve all those objectives. Now, the financing environment is much more difficult, and so, we need people to meet their obligations that they agreed to on the, on the project labor agreement. That's pretty much it.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Garino Sowaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Tom. Thank you for coming again.
Thank you councillor.
I just have one question. Are there still plans for an indoor concert venue, entertainment venue, like concerts and, and shows and stuff like that?
We don't really have formal plans for an indoor concert venue. We like, we love the outdoor concert venue. That's been a, a big success, so we're really happy with that. We do think that music will play a role. So, there'll be, could there be an indoor concert venue? Not sure what size it would be, but we definitely think music will be a theme and will play a role in the success of the site. It's, it's been great with attracting people. Almost every single one of these shows that we've had has sold out. There's 8,500 people. So, we're really happy about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you councillor.
Thank you councillor, councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. O'Brien, thanks so much for being here tonight. As you can probably tell, once the article hit, our phones kind of blew up. People would ask us on the street, people would text us about the, um, the future of the site. But hearing you here tonight and how confident you are with the project is, is a great thing for us. My big thing with Revere is, sometimes we always have to look outside of the city to go to things like, you know, Assembly Row, Linfield Marketplace. We have to go to Linfield to go bowling, you know, movie theater. We used to have a great movie theater for years and years. That's gone, so we have to go to other cities and towns to visit the movie theater. But I'm, I'm excited to see what retail spots and entertainment outlets open up there.
Thank you councillor.
Is there any, um, any timeline on when you could announce what restaurants or companies are looking, looking to come to the site?
We're hoping we're close in the next number of weeks to being able to announce the, the first one, and, and then they have to build them out. And so, we'd have them built out, you know, sometime over the winter into next spring to get them, you know, fully open, because they have to build out their spaces and the thing. The, the one thing I would say is, councillor McKenna, from the very first meeting, said, you know, we want, the same, just as you said councillor Haas, that, you know, the idea is, rather than having to go outside the city, can we make this a place where there are restaurants, where there, where people can enjoy the open space, can be there? You know, it's, it's, it, it takes a lot of effort, a lot of work, but we've been putting that work in, and we've done this before. So, we, we, you know, we're excited to be able, to be able to deliver these pieces, but that's our objective, is to make it a place where people want to be. Great. Thank you. Thank you councillor.
Thank you councillor. Anyone else wishing to ask questions? Tom, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for understanding the importance of this project and what it means to the community. Thanks for always being, being willing to come up here.
Thank you councillor.
Please unfile.
Calendar item number four, motion presented by council president Cogliangro, that the mayor, chief of police and DPW superintendent will appear before the city council to discuss the growing problem with vehicles speeding throughout the city, enforcement of traffic laws, issuance of violations and speed calming measures such as speed tables.
Permission to speak from the chair. Thank you. I filed this motion for the many, many, many residents who call us or communicate with us about speeding issues, traffic violations, and just overall public safety with all of our, the vehicles on the road. I want to thank the chief, the mayor, the city planner, the engineer, and the superintendent, the DPW for being here. I'm not sure who would like to come up first. Looks like the chief Callahan. Thank you very much.
Good evening councillors.
Good evening chief.
We're here tonight to talk about some traffic-related issues, and I'll be honest, that's our number-one complaint that we get, is speeding vehicles, the way people drive, things like that. And it's very challenging for us, and I would say, since COVID, it's been a major complaint throughout the state. I, I've spoken to other departments, the state police, and it's like, we're trying to get back in gear to where things were prior to COVID. So, our numbers were off, they were down, there was almost zero traffic enforcement for over, like, a year and a half, unless it was some significant incident. But one, things that did go up during that time, single-vehicle accidents. And they were doing a substantial amount of damage, because not a lot of people on the road, there wasn't a lot of enforcement, and you had people driving careless and recklessly. So, since then, we're trying to pick our numbers up, and we're trying to do some other things, thinking out of the box a little bit. We have some speed trailers, I can talk about that in a moment. And the councillor knows very well about those. He was masterful with them. And we've done some other things in conjunction with the DPW and other city entities and partnerships, where we're looking at other ways to slow traffic. We've been doing things with, and, and they can speak about it, because I don't know a lot about it. Almost like speed bumps, but they're humps, they're traffic calming measures, we've been utilizing those, and they, they can only be in selected areas. And like I said, they can talk about it, I can't. That's something that's way beyond me, about the engineering and how they figure it out and how they do it. And our, our end, we're, we're trying to pick up enforcement. Right now, we have two people in the traffic unit. Right now, they're focusing on areas that were having substantial problems, like Squire Road. There was unfortunately a pedestrian accident down there a little while back, and, you know, they've been focusing, focusing over there, trying to slow the traffic down and writing citations. And some of them, they've been selective. They're not getting people just going 10 miles an hour over. Some of the tickets I see there are kind of, you know, very excessive. 30 and 40 miles an hour over the speed limit at different times of day when the traffic's light. And those are some of the chronic offenders we're focusing on. So, you know, we're going to work on it. We're trying to, like I said, staff the traffic department a little better. We're in the process of getting some people. They're in the police academy now, so when we get, hopefully, those five out, we can add another person at the traffic and try to staff it better and have them out there a little more focusing on some of these areas. And councillor, what else? You were looking for some numbers or data?
Yeah, chief, I, I-
Yeah.
I requested quarterly reports about, just let me pull up the motion, so I don't fumble with the wording. Let's see here. Just my, my apologies, but something essentially along the lines of just quarterly numbers about the number of traffic stops and traffic violations that the city sees.
Yeah. No, 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 absolutely. We can do something like that on a quarterly report, and maybe send something out to you with the council, just to give you some better information on how things go. Because we're kind of like at the halfway point this year, and our numbers are definitely off, and hopefully, they'll increase as we go through the year and into next year.
Thank you. And, and I, I do know, you know, I, I guess one of the questions that I have for you chief is, just, you know, I know, is it seven or eight, eight sectors? I apologize.
Well, we have seven sectors throughout the city.
So, seven, so I, I know that there's usually, is it one per sector, one officer, something along those lines?
Yes.
Okay. So, the, I guess, and this is all residents that ask me these questions, but if a police officer's patrolling and they observe speeding, or they observe someone rolling through a stop sign, is, are they able to, are they going to pull someone over, or they just continue to patrol?
No, they should, unless they're on a certain duty or responded to a call. I mean, that's, in their job description, is to enforce traffic laws. And the, the other thing that makes it a little prohibitive for us as well, it stretches us thin. We're call-driven here in this police department. We're averaging around 30,000 calls a year, and it keeps increasing every year. So, like, the officers are going from one call to another, to another, to another, on some nights.
Thank you chief. Unless anyone else has a question for chief, or chief right now? Councillor Janino?
I have more general, all the gentlemen up there right now. First of all, I'm familiar with the speeding and where it's occurring and how fast they're going.
Yes.
I'm also familiar with the speed trailers and how they work, and basically reducing the average vehicle down. So, if a car's doing 35 or 40 miles an hour, and they see the speed sign, and it's flashing 25, that's the normal person slowing down, saying, "I didn't realize it was going 35, 40 miles an hour." Whereas, the extreme drivers that are driving fast on purpose, driving dangerous, we're not going to affect them at all. However, I did see some stuff with Boston right now, that they're installing 1,500 speed bumps or humps-
Yes.
Over the next three years. And they're putting them in the neighborhoods and on smaller streets that are not traveled by buses, emergency vehicles, and they're putting more than one on some streets. So, if the longer street, there'd be two or three humps in a row. I was wondering if we could look at this something, maybe long-term, not immediately, down the line, on that, on that avenue?
No, absolutely. And with that, that I can put you to the head of DPW, the superintendent. He can go over that, because a lot of that, they've been looking into, about how they're going to address some of those issues. And I had a conversation. But that's definitely for his auspice and Mr. Reistrum to explain. But on your speed trailers, that's 100% correct. I look at some of the data, because those speed trailers have computers in them. And it'll show how many cars go down the street, the average speed. In one of the, the reports, I, I looked over and looked at the data, 58% of the drivers that were going over the speed limit, like 10 miles an hour or 15 miles an hour, they decreased their speed as soon as, like, they came in visual contact with those, the, the speed sign or the speed trailer. So, it definitely i- is good for the average person who was just unaware or not paying attention to what they're doing. But like he said, for the chronic aggressive driver, that's another story.
And I also noticed, this is with the National Highway Safety Traffic Bureau, that the speed trailers and the speed humps were two of the more effective ways of making people aware of the speeds they're going and slowing them down. Not, not down, the aggressive ones, that you're not going to slow them down, that's the tickets and towing the cars and stuff like that. But the normal person driving and not realizing that they're going 10 miles over or 15 miles over.
Yes.
Thank you councillor. Chief, I'm sorry, I just had something else popping in my head.
Yes, sir.
I think I told this story last year. I was in New York, took a right on red, it's not allowed, saw a flash, got a ticket in the mail. Not only was it a ticket, it was a picture of my car, a zoomed-in picture of my plate, a video. They pretty much said, "Here, you can appeal if you want," but I wouldn't. And I was told that that's illegal in this state. Now, I understand that, but I, from what I was told, there are talks to potentially legalize that. Is that something that's happening, or that you might know of?
I've heard some talk about it, but I haven't seen anything that's legislatively going through with the state or whatever. But a lot of states do do that. Unfortunately, it's not permissible in Massachusetts at this current time.
They came to us a few years ago with one of the companies, and they wanted to make it an ordinance violation, as opposed to a mass general law violation. And with the legality involved with it and the appeals process, we didn't go with it.
So, it's, it's something that's challenging. But it's something, you know, I would love the, the state legislator to look into something like that, because it would deter some people.
Would fund the high school, honestly, with the amount of issues we have right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And just the, the other thing too, and I'll close out with this, this is just a thickly settled and a thickly traveled area. There's a lot of commuter traffic, and if you're out at different times of the day, early in the morning or later at night, there's a lot of travel, traffic that just travels to and from through Revere. They come from the north and come from the south. And you can see them coming in the morning to go to work, and you can see them leaving the area at night. So, that's another challenge for us as well. But we do the best we can, and whatever we can do for you councillor, we will.
Thank you very much chief. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We have the city engineer and superintendent here.
Good evening. Chris Chiamello, Superintendent Pollock works. Just to touch on councillor Janino's message he said, so, first off, we, since this is a major concern of the council, and also the mayor's office as well, we've been in touch with a company called Traffic Logix, which gives you the ability to, they, they install temporary speed humps, speed cushions, and speed tables. They're made out of a rubberized recycled rubber that can be placed down in the winter, fall, spring, I'm sorry, summer, fall, spring, and removed in the wintertime for plowing. Because plowing is one of my major concerns with putting these speed humps everywhere. There's also, we do have at the DPW now, there are five of those speed radar signs that just allow passerby's to know what their speed is. They're bought with some community-developed money, so those can be installed to help out with the speeding issue. Yeah, there's a couple of things that we've been looking into, but as long as you guys are, as long as the councillors are happy to point out a couple of areas, they'd like to try out some of these measures, we'd be more than happy to install a few and see how they go.
I think we could find a few areas. Councillor Garino Sowaya?
Sagamore Street, right away.
All right.
Sagamore Street, the cars are speeding through there to get to Wonderland and trying to beat the traffic on North Shore Road. So, it's really urgent down that end. People, I've had probably 15, 16 phone calls from residents down there. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you councillor, councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, for the leeway. With those, the, the rubber ones, you said that made out of recycled rubber, they, they screw in, correct?
Yeah. So, they're designed to be bolted into the ground-
Yep.
And then, at a later date, you can remove them.
Okay.
They're supposed to last as long, if not longer, than regular asphalt.
They're supposed to last as long, if not longer, than regular asphalt speed humps and barriers.
Just so you were aware, maybe the, the ones you get were better. They just installed a couple up by the Veterans Home in Chelsea. And the problem they're having with them is that after every so many days, the, the screws are starting to lift up out of the, the bolts that'll hold them in. So it's, it's becoming an issue and, and that's happening every few days. So just food for thought.
All right.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, thanks so much for being here tonight. So I think we had two motions go in about Winthrop Ave. So maybe if one of those signs could go up where the senior center is. So it's that whole stretch where the senior center is, and then it goes all the way to the playgrounds where the Immaculate Conception is. So I think there's one speed limit sign further down near McMackin. But that might be a great area. I think I had put a motion in, and I believe Counselor McKenna and Counselor Sawai also put a motion in for that area. But that might be a, a great area to look at if you're looking to set up one of the signs.
All right. Thank you, Counselor.
We also have some, some of the flashing crosswalk signs that might work even better in that area.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. There is a, I don't know if it's a working sign or not, but there used to be a sign across the street from McMackin Park when the park was active so the kids could cross the street. I, I'm pretty sure it's still there. Paul Argenzio, would you know that, Counselor Argenzio?
Yes, the, the set of lights is still there.
Are they working lights?
I don't believe they're working, no.
So I mean, they're still there for, so we could probably have them fixed. But that, that used to be utilized when the kids were crossing the street to go to McMackin Field. And then when that closed down, they shut them.
We can definitely look into that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor. Just a quick question. So, well, it is a question, but I think what, one thing that I want to know is the cost. So what does it cost? I know the, the speed table on Cushman Ave was a big to-do. We had to run electrical there for the signage. So what does a speed table cost? What does a speed bump cost? What does a speed hump? Speed, I don't know. There's all kinds of things, but average cost.
So the ones that we were looking at on Traffic Logix, they were around between around three and four grand apiece. I do not have the price of an actual asphalt speed hump. I believe it's around eight to nine. Counselor Argenzio might be able to answer that better than I can.
Counselor? The, the speed table and the speed humps are two different things. The speed tables are, like the one on Cushman is extremely expensive. Speed humps, along with the painting, usually goes about $6,000, depending on how, obviously, how wide the street is.
I don't know if you know this question off the top of your head, but how much money is budgeted for, you know, speed deterrence, such as the speed tables and whatnot?
That I do not know off the top of my head.
I'm sorry, maybe.
I can get back to you.
Yeah, just take, take a note at your leisure. Appreciate it.
Of course.
I, I don't believe there's anything that is specifically line item for
No.
speed deterrence.
From the sounds of it, we might have to have Mr. Viskey add one in there for them. So, but any other councilors have any questions for Mr. Charamello or Mr. Reistrum? Nick, did you want to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that there are a lot of challenges to installing the speed calming measures. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that we can't always place these types of things in the exact, you know, location that we would want to because of how they affect driveways and street intersections and then drainage on the street and things like that. So I just wanted to, you know, bring that to people's attention, that, you know, if we're looking at putting these types of traffic calming measures out, it may not be exactly, you know, the, the location that we're thinking. Maybe it's 50 feet this way or 100 feet that way or, you know, that sort of thing. And in a lot of, you know, of the city, there is, there isn't any drainage infrastructure, and that plays a big part in where we can locate these types of things. So it's just something to be aware of the challenges that, that come with trying to locate these types of traffic calming measures.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any, any other questions from the council? I do know we have a couple of residents in line that, that have some questions. So we give them an opportunity to speak. Sorry, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anthony Cantino. I live at 240 Suffolk Avenue. The point, the reason why I'm here, I am on the agenda, I believe. Counselor Paul told, I told him at the last meeting, I want to be on the agenda. I want to ask the chief of police several questions. One of them is why he hasn't signed my peddler hawkers license.
Sir, we're talking about, we're talking about speeding. I'm going to shut you down. I'm going to shut you down.
Mr. Cantino, then, I'm sorry, this is a, we had a presentation about speeding and public safety as far as vehicles are concerned. Your peddler's license has absolutely nothing to do with public safety, sir. So I'm going to ask, I don't see your name on the agenda. Mr. Cantino, you're excused. Next person, come on up. It's safe, don't worry. Hit, hit the button. And name and address for the record, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for, all for your services. My name is Suzie Kevorkian, and I live at 205 Cushman Ave. And I just wanted to basically address on the topic of speeding and a lot of traffic violation. I've been at my property for a little over 25 years now. And I have grown children who went to Revere High, Wayland School at the time when it was Wayland. Safety is basically, it's really, really high concern. I, my driveway literally sits across Adams Ave, Cushman and Adams. If you, if you have one of those crazy violators, they can ram right into my driveway and hit my house. I have actually been hit coming, pulling out of my driveway. And one of the things that I'm asking, and I know it's on your agenda today, is topic number 31, which thank you for putting that as a motion, for the cameras across, which is at the, you know, crossroads of Adams and Cushman. I appreciate that, and I hope you pass that. It's really high concern because I have witnessed, no one stops at Adams Street. No one. Absolutely no one. You can, I've actually even offered Chief Callahan to come and park in my driveway. And you can actually pay for the school if you actually catch the violators for the high school that you're actually seeking for funds. Just come. I give you all permission to park at my driveway and catch all those traffic violators. You would make thousands of dollars, if not hundreds. Just come and park in my driveway and catch all the violators. And speed noise, mopeds. You actually have another motion, I think number 36, if I'm not mistaken, no, 37, excuse me. I would really love to add Cushman Ave and Adams as a quiet zone. There is just insane. I mean, we have schools one way, both ways, actually. There's three ways of school. There's Lincoln, there's Wayland, there's the high school. We have Park. We have the veterans who live right across the street that no one even take, you know, thinks about. It's just that's a really, really bad intersection there that is high volume of violators as when it comes to speeding. And, I mean, I can't even get out of my driveway. Let's just, you know, I want to, I'm sorry to reiterate that. But I also am asking, I'm hoping that you can take a consideration to make Adams Street go one way south toward Constitution Ave and not have anyone turn right or left on Cushman Ave. I'm asking that sincerely because buses can't even actually turn left when it's high, you know, it's really cold winter months, and they just skid. And it's a high dangerous, you know, uphill. I'm asking that, I hope you can put that in your motion to make Adams Street go one way away from Cushman. Because I am really, my, my whole family, anyone that's in my driveway can actually get killed one day, and I don't want that to happen. I've witnessed way too many accidents at that intersection. And, and not, you know, joking aside, put the, you know, jokes aside, really, you're more than welcome, seriously, you have me on public notice to come and park, you know, a, a cruiser or somebody in the, you know, basically patrol as Chief Callahan mentioned, the sectors, the seven or eight around the city. I don't see any patrol anymore. There used to be high volume of patrol, I want to say about five years ago. That has stopped. There's not one, there used to be a police officer thing, I don't know who it was, that would pull over many people at that insane intersection. And of course, also down the street at Sergeant Street and, and Cushman where they cross each other. There was one police officer that would always pull a lot of violators. I don't know what happened to that, that particular patrol. There's not many patrols. I actually have witnessed police officers in high pursuit that almost got hit at that intersection of Adams and Cushman. And unfortunately, the officer couldn't stop and basically make any type of, given any, you know, tickets to that violator. I, I'm, you know, I know there's a lot of different intersections. I hope you make a priority because there's kids, there's children, there's, it just, that's, that intersection is, I just don't want anyone dying. And one of them is me. I can just be out there in my yard, mowing my lawn. I could get hit. And that's how bad it is. And I'm hoping that you can make, you know, it's great that there's, you know, the, the DPW spoke earlier, the gentleman. And there's, you know, bumps or, you know, speed tables being put places. I know Cushman Ave is, I know there's one down the street, but it's a little too far away. And, and the speed is literally from Sergeant Street, they run, like, they run, I don't know how fast, like, they just, you know, pedal to the metal and to make it to that Cushman, you know, Cushman and to Adams Street. It's just, we need more patrolmen. We need more police patrolling the area. And I don't think we have one. I don't see one, I, at all. Especially, not only from school time, but especially during the day where schools, school time is when everything is kind of calm. But after nine o'clock in the morning to like maybe two or three in the afternoon, it's, there's just so many violators there. And I wish I can, you know, show, share pictures with you. But Cushman Ave and Adams Street, please make that one way going south away from Cushman Ave. And that, that, all that violators, or come and park in my driveway, catch every violator, bring that revenue to the, that sector, and do something about it. Because there is a way to slow down traffic, and we, we need implementation. That's one of the other things that I wanted to ask. And thank you for my time.
And thank you for coming up and speaking, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you all for your services, too.
Thank you. Have a great night. Mr. Reistrum, Mr. Charamello, Chief Callahan, thank you so much for being here tonight. Sincerely appreciate it. If there's any other questions, we'll send them right to you. Have a good night.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called is ordered on a request from the city planner on behalf of the planning board relative to an ordinance further amending the zoning map of the city of Revere relative to 1330 Broadway, CD to Ted District, and the Beauchamp Fire Station at 931 Winthrop Ave, RB to NB.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Tom Skarowski, chief of planning and community development. I'm just wanted to briefly talk about these two zoning changes. They're pretty straightforward. The first is 1330 Broadway, which is actually on 107, just north of Brown Circle. Right around the time I was starting here at the city, October 2022, there was a zoning map change to take a series of parcels throughout the city that were conservation land and zone them as CD, which is to indicate that those parcels are not developable parcels. The one parcel in question, 1330 Broadway, is an exception amongst all the others around it and Romney Marsh. And I think as a result, it was inadvertently zoned CD when it should have stayed as it currently was prior to October of 2022, which is a Ted District. So effectively, through that scribbler's error, we made this parcel value list for the, the property owners. So that was our fault, not theirs, and we would ask to reclassify this to make up for that error. And then 931 Winthrop Ave, which is, you know, the, the Beauchamp Fire Station, we're looking to have that rezoned to be neighborhood business. As it currently stands today, all the work that we've been doing to plan a redevelopment of the Beauchamp Fire Station into a community arts center, that actually, I guess I would say it's questionable as to whether or not that would be viable under our zoning as it currently is today. If we were to reclassify it as neighborhood business, that would then be a permitted use at the site. Happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Skarowski. Counselor McKenna? Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. This is a public hearing.
Oh.
We are going to open this up to proponents. Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none. Close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone not in favor? Closing that side of the hearing. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, I just want to say thank you for putting the Beauchamp Fire Station under this zoning change. And I just want to know, I don't know, I, I shouldn't even bring this up, but I know National Grid was up there and they wanted to put a gas line into the Beauchamp Fire Station for free. And it just got held up. And I just want to know why it got held up. Because I, I mean, they're still working. So it can be done. But I was just wondering why it's, it hasn't been done.
So they required National Grid a load letter from the city that basically stated what the anticipated load of any natural gas use at the site was. Essentially, that it would be used for, you know, heating-only purposes, I believe. And so prior to Chief Charamello leaving, he had worked with a plumber to get all the steps in place to get such a letter drafted. And when this came in front of the council tonight, we realized that I'd never actually signed the letter. So I signed it today, and we should be good to go. And that should set us up before that work happens.
Great. Thank you so much.
Any other councilors? This is going to be referred to zoning on August 26th.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called is ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install a new pole, number 1550, on Railroad Street, beginning at a point approximately 10 feet south of the center line of Lee Bar Bank Highway and continuing approximately 648 feet in a west direction, Revere Mouse.
Is anyone here from National Grid? I'm inclined to just place this on file unless there's opposition. Place on file.
Calendar item number seven. Hearing called is ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install a line of underground electrical, electrical conduits across Railroad Street to existing manhole A29 from the property line of 30 Railroad Street towards existing conduits on Railroad Street, and install conduits from manhole 120 across Railroad Street to proposed new pole 1550.
Place on file.
Unfinished business. Calendar item number eight. Motion presented by Counselor Zambudo that the city council establish by rule of order the following criteria for the installation of city councillor portraits in the council chamber. One, portraits must be of city councillors who have passed away. Two, the individual must have made notable contributions to the city or represents a significant milestone in the history of the city council. Three, the city council shall designate a subcommittee to review nominations based on the contributions or milestone. Nominations for portrait shall be, I'm sorry, portrait, display shall be submitted by city councillors only. Five, once a nomination is approved, a high-quality portrait will be selecting from existing digital photographs. And six, portraits will be displayed in designated space in the city council chamber approved by the selection committee.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've discussed this before, and so this pretty much speaks for itself. I don't want to prolong anything. I think it's important. I think that we, that we control these things. And so that's why I put this in. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Permission to speak from the chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just an idea, Counselor, I don't know how you feel, but I think we spoke briefly about it earlier. Instead of selecting a brand-new committee, maybe make this part of, right now, it's the, we have a subcommittee that's Appointments and Personnel. My thought was to change this to Appointments and Recognition. Because when do we ever have personnel? personnel issues? We don't really deal with that. So maybe we could make portraits part of recognition so that we have a subcommittee already in place, so we don't have to create a, a new one. If everybody thinks that's okay, it's created. And just one more question, councillor. The cost associated with creating the portraits, do we know where that's?
Well, I think the city clerk can speak to that probably. Not to put you on the spot.
The prior three portraits that you see above you to the right are, were paid for by the families of those individuals.
And I, I think it should remain that way. Thank you.
Do we want to make an amendment to the, the rules or?
No, I think the, I think this committee can determine that. Should we change this?
I would recommend going forward, let's say for next fiscal year budget, that the city council request from the mayor to put line items for such recognition because these portraits can be upwards of over $500 per portrait. Okay?
There you go.
Mr. President.
Councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to point out that, you know, a month or so ago, we had a great motion to name a playground in North Revere after a great man in John Jones, who was a longtime Revere resident. And that was something the council all got behind, and I believe we all put that in as a motion together. So maybe the recognition subcommittee could also deal with things such as parks or naming, you know, playgrounds or areas after, you know, council members that.
I couldn't agree more. I think that's a great idea. Thank you, councillor. Any other councilors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number nine. Motion presented by Councillor Garino-Swaya that the city council approve the installation of a portrait memorializing the late city councillor George J. Rotundo Jr. in the Joseph A. Del Grosso City Council Chamber.
Councillor Garino-Swaya.
We'll just send it to the appointments and recognition committee, and I'll talk then.
Thanks.
Bravo.
Referring to appointments and recognition subcommittee.
Next up is the Legislative Affairs Committee report.
Councillor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. There were three items before us this evening. The first was an ordinance offered by Councillor Hara Mio, an ordinance providing for interpretation services for public meetings and public documents. We looked upon that favorably and are looking to move that to a public hearing in August. If we could have a roll call if necessary.
This will be ordered to a public hearing.
The second issue is an ordinance offered by Councillor Kelly, an ordinance requiring the publication of certain records of the police department. This was passed favorably and I asked for a roll call to look upon it favorably.
Ordered on a second reading. Ordered on a third and final reading. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance requiring the publication of certain records of the police department? Councillor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Genino.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Garino-Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas.
This was approved without the, the names, right?
Councillor, I'm, I'm so sorry, we're in the middle of a roll call. I apologize.
Councillor Haas voting yes. Councillor Hara Mio?
Yes.
Voting yes. Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky is absent. Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Thank you. And the third item, a motion presented by Councillor Garino-Swaya that the mayor requests the city planner to draft a zoning ordinance prohibiting short-term rental use in single-family zoning districts. The short-term rental office appeared before us and they offered some amendments. We have an amended motion that we looked favorably upon and we would like to send it to public
Ordered to a public hearing.
Thank you.
Onto communications. Calendar item number 13. Communication from RPD Officer Singer of Revere Boxing requesting a temporary fundraising business license pursuant to Revere Revised Ordinances, Section 5.13.040, for the purpose of raising funds for the Revere Boxing program.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. It's Joseph Singer at 65 Yeeman Street, Revere Boxing.
Does anyone have any questions? I'm, I'm ready to, to. If you, just give us a little bit of.
So basically, in addition to what we already have, we already have online merchandise sales in place. But I want to be able to set up a pop-up tent in different locations throughout the city. So there's not only we can, we can engage more people and get them involved and they can see what we have to offer. I'd like to do demonstrations and have kids be able to show them what they're learning. In this way, we can get more, expand on our program and get more people involved in our
Thank you, sir. Councillor Garino-Swaya.
Joe, this is a fantastic idea. Anything to involve the kids in the community is fantastic. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Right now, we're running a free summer program and in addition to the after-school program that's also free. So as we expand and we move into our third year, all of the money we raise from our program is from our merchandise sales. So we just want to keep it going. And I appreciate all your support. Thank you.
No problem. Councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joe, I just want to thank you for everything you do for the city, for the families, for the kids, especially you provide kids with the, with an outlet that they didn't have before in, you know, Revere. We've always looked at having a Boys and Girls Club, a YMCA, something like that as something we'd never have. And thank you for everything you do for, for the kids. And now just if you can focus on getting a, a boxing program for the younger kids so I don't have to take my son to Middleton.
That's, that's in the works. I mean, we, we do have, I mean, I wouldn't be able to do this without all of my volunteers that are helping. I got some great coaches that come and volunteer their time. And again, all this money that we're raising, nobody's receiving a paycheck. So they're doing all this after work, sometimes working 10-hour days and then coming and volunteering four or five hours a day for the kids. So it's, it's a great thing. We got people that, that back this program.
Great. Thanks, Joe. Thanks for everything.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joey, I've known you for a long time. I just want to say, you know, being a teacher for 33 years, you touch kids' lives, you make a difference in their, for the rest of their lives. So I, I just, you making a difference like this is just so meaningful. And you'll see it, you know, maybe in five, six, seven years from now, they'll come back or they'll, and they'll just say thank you, you know? You're keeping them off the streets, you're giving them a purpose. So you should be congratulated. Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, just like, just like everyone, you know, that wears a Red Sox hat or a Celtics hat, we got the, just like I wear this Patriot on my chest, this is a sense of pride for our city. So when you see this, you'll be able to associate with this logo. And when you see people walking around with the Patriot logo, the Revere Patriot, you know, you're going to be able to know, oh, he's from Revere. He could be in a different city, could be in a different state, but you see him wearing that Patriot. It's a sense of pride for our city.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Silvestri.
Joe, thanks for coming up. Thanks for all you're doing. How do we make this a permanent license?
I'm not even looking for permanent. I just want to be able to sell what we have to, you know, we're in a good spot, but I want to keep it going. We were able to, with our merchandise sales, we were able to have the Rumble in Revere, which was our first one this year. And I'm hoping to make that an annual thing. We had almost 700 people. Right now, we have 11 kids that compete. We have two that have won the Golden Gloves and we have one that is one a King of the Ring Tournament champion. So.
Awesome.
I want to keep those kids active and keep them going.
Continue the good work, Joe. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joe, I just want to thank you. You're, you're helping to shape young people's lives. I've been involved in a lot of nonprofits, I'm on the board of directors of the Sulegian Boys and Girls Club. And I see how kids' lives can be shaped and you're changing lives. And you're, you're to be honored for that because it's, it's a really big deal and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Like I said, one mission, same goal. We're all here together to work together and I appreciate everybody's support in this community that helps make this happen. Thank you.
Permission to speak from the chair? You weren't getting away that easy. I gotta say something. Thank you for what you do. And I just, you know, I've been to Revere Boxing a couple of times. Joe, Joe has extended the use of his facility anytime I want to go. And that's how that place is. You show up, you train, you have great coaches, you have great equipment. It is, it makes me so proud that we have a facility like that and even more proud that people who are born and raised here are running it. And I do want to put a challenge out to the, my fellow councilors. I don't know if I was the only one, but I did sponsor the event, the Rumble in Revere. And I want to put the challenge out to the rest of you to make sure that you sponsor that event. It is so important, so important, the work that gets done over there. So thank you very much for being here. And this is, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Calendar item number 14. Communication from the Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion relative to an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the display of flags in the use of City Hall.
Director Morabito.
Thank you, Steve Morabito, 281 Broadway. I know this is going to a public hearing, but I just want to briefly fill you in. So this ordinance establishes rules and regulations for the display of flags and the use of City Hall. This ordinance is designed to uphold the values and uphold state and federal laws of flags within the city. It also gives jurisdiction to the city council and the mayor for flag raises within the city. And I can go further into detail at the public hearing.
Any questions? Councillor Silvestri.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Morabito. I guess I'm just confused. Do we need a regulation under the flag raisings? I thought it was someone that just comes before us, proposes to have a flag raised and, and that's what we do. I'm not sure what an ordinance or why we would need an ordinance. Can you help?
So yes, like I said, I'd go further into detail at the public hearing, but there was a Supreme Court case ruling, Shirtlift First, Boston, where Boston was sued because they declined a Christian flag raising. And what the Supreme Court found was that they had no, Boston had no guidance, no rules and regulations in place to follow. There is more into it that I can go into, but I don't want to take too much of your time.
No, I'm, we have plenty of time. So are we trying to ban a certain flag from going up?
We're not trying to ban anything. We're trying to give, create rules and regulations because that's the direction the Supreme Court wants us to go in, to create a policy and have policies in place to protect our city from being liable from lawsuits.
I mean, I, I think if we, we just allow those who want to raise a flag to raise a flag, I don't see any problem that's happens yet for what we're trying to put this in place. Now, have I, have I witnessed some, some flag raisings that I was morally did not agree with? Absolutely. Was I at flag raisings that I did not agree with what the speaker was saying? 1,000%. But as a soldier who fought for this flag, I don't think we should be taking anyone's freedom of speech, freedom of flag. I, I don't think we should be doing that. And I, I just don't understand what this ordinance.
So basically, the Supreme Court, so the ordinance explicitly states the city's flag poles are not intended to serve as a public forum for free expression by individuals or groups. Instead, the flags flown represent the official sentiments of the city of Revere. So in the Shirtlift case, what they were saying was because, give me one second.
Yeah, no problem.
Expect to speak on this. I apologize.
Just take your time, Mr. Morabito. I think hearing, hearing this will be the decision whether this goes to Legislative Affairs in, in a way to, you know, an opinion from the solicitor or if we push it to a public hearing. And I know other councilors have questions, too. Just give them a minute.
Do you guys want to go over the ordinance? Do you have the ordinance in front of you? So first, we have Section 1.10-10, Display of Flags. So the ordinance ensures that our flags displayed at City Hall adhere to federal and state guidelines, maintaining a sense of order and respect for our symbols of unity. It prioritizes the United States flags, followed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts flags, and then our city of Revere flag. The ordinance grants the mayor and the city council the authority to lower flags at half-staff, recognizing the solemnity of occasions such as deaths of a city employee and the line of duty or other significant events. This flexibility allows us to honor and respect important moments and individuals within our communities. Importantly, this ordinance also embraces our city's diversity by allowing for the display of other flags. These include flags of recognized governments, branches of U.S. military, and significant symbols like the Blue Star Service Flag and the MIA Missing in Action Prisoner of War Flag. Notably, during June, we will fly the LGBTQ Pride Flag and Juneteenth Flag, reflecting recognition of our diverse community. But more importantly, it will be through proclamation of the city council and the mayor. Then if we go down to the legal protections, when you look into legal protections and preventing lawsuits and the light, so in light of the Shirtlift in Boston case, it was, it was crucial that our city had a clear and precise regulations regarding flag displays to avoid legal disputes. So this, this ordinance states that the city flag poles are not intended to serve as a public forum for free expression by individuals or groups. So it'll be orchestrated by the city of Revere.
Okay. So I, I think I'm going to address the elephant in the room here. Are we trying to stop a certain flag from being raised? Because that's, that's what it seems like to me is we're, we're trying to create an ordinance. Well, then, then what do we need to create an ordinance for? Because anyone who comes before us, I have never seen anyone be denied a flag raising, ever. So why are we putting a law in place that's going to create a, a law behind flag raisings when no one's been denied?
So this is something that cities across Massachusetts have been doing and across the country since the Supreme Court has made a ruling to prevent us from losing money in a lawsuit.
Because you said that a city denied a Catholic, a Christian flag from being, yes, that is what you said, councillor. You said a, a, a city denied, Boston denied, a Catholic or Christian flag from being raised. And when they did so, they got sued. Because they didn't have an ordinance in place, that is why they lost. So what I'm hearing in all that is we're looking to try putting an ordinance in place so we can stop certain flags from raising.
We're looking to create guidelines so there's references to, to have government expression of, government speech expression. So right now, there is nothing in place. Even by Massachusetts Municipal Association, they have had meetings with cities over and over about creating policies. Medford, Melrose, Revere, Lynn, Chelsea, city of Boston, they've all created flag ordinances just to protect the city from liability and suit.
Okay, Cal, Mr. Morabito, if, if that's what the reason is, I, I don't think if we're going, not looking to deny anyone, we don't, we don't need to do so. But I, I, like I said before, I've been to certain flag raisings that I was disgusted to stand there, but I still think they have. But I still think they have the right and freedom to do what they say and raise their, they were, it's not like they were a Nazi group, it was a Christianist organization. And I believe that there's, this motion solely is intended to block that group from raising their flag, and I just don't agree with it.
The motion is solely to protect the city against financial liability.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Elset. Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Sambudo.
Through you, Mr. President.
Let's just, go ahead, Mr. Morabito, just really quickly, because we have a lot of counselors. Guys, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm inclined to just get, get an opinion from the solicitor. And then put this back in a subcommittee, or put it into the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee, because I'm unsure of all of this and where there was case law around his, Director Morabito's reasoning, maybe we should get an opinion from the solicitor.
Yes, I'm not a legal expert, so I can't speak to the legal.
You do now, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm one who feels it's all or none. Okay? If we're going to, if we're going to eliminate the Christian or Catholic flag, as Boston did, I'm going to eliminate the Pride Flag and all the other flags that go up. It's all or nothing. And that's, you're my dear friend, you're in charge of DEI. That's everybody. That's what I think your, your job is. So, it's all or nothing for me. I'm either all in or all out. Nobody gets a flag if somebody I can't stand doesn't get their flag, or somebody I love doesn't get their flag. And so that's where I come down on this. I agree, we need opinions on this. I don't think, my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, but I sometimes play one on TV, but my opinion is, we don't need it. But let's, let's, you know, unless, unless we intend to deny people from putting their flags up. We, we put in everybody's country's flag up, we're putting all kinds of flags up. And that's what I want to continue to do. I'm not denying anybody. And if we're going to do that, then that's fine. I think we already do that, and I don't see a need for this. If, if the legal people can convince me we need this, then maybe I'll support it, maybe I won't. But let's, let's go down that road. I think you're absolutely right. This needs to go into committee, needs to be discussed, even before it goes to a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be really brief, but I have an all or nothing opinion on this as well. But my opinion is, I would rather just have the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Flag, the United States Flag, the City of Revere Flag, maybe the Pau Mia Blue Star Service Flag, and that's it. I think this opens the door. If you're going to allow one, you have to allow them all. We have to be very careful that this is an ordinance that is even, applied even-handedly across the board, or it's going to open us up to issues. And right off the bat, reading the ordinance, I know that the Supreme Court case made a reference to reversing the two lower court cases and siding with the plaintiff because they specifically cited the issue of duration of the display of the flags, that the, the flags were displayed for a very short period of time. And I don't see any timeframes for the display even mentioned in this. So, it gets into the issue, if one flag is raised for four hours and one flag is raised for a week or a month, so I think there's issues with this. I do also, I just want to point out that I understand Mr. Morabito's objective with this, because to put something in place, to say that we are not stating that the flag poll is a forum for public speech, it is more a sentiment of the city. I think that's what he is surrounding, that why we need the protection. If we make that statement and we have the, an ordinance that contains that language, then we are somewhat being protected under that case law. And to that, I agree with. However, I do think there are holes in this ordinance, so that we definitely need to send it to Subcommittee and get expert legal opinion and guidance on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Geralmio.
Yeah, I just have some questions. So the flags that fly right now, do they, do they fly at the request of the mayor, the DEI director, a community partner, a resident, right now, today?
Currently, there is no policy in place, no rules and regulations.
So how does a flag end up on our flag poll? Today?
In the past, it was organized through the.
Not in the past, because we had a flag raising on Thursday.
So right now, it's just done basically by, it's, can be done by a private group. They can come and ask the mayor, or right now, there's no application process.
So right now, a private person can come and request for a flag to be flown.
They can ask.
And the assumption is that they're doing so to express their rights, freedom of expression. So what you're telling me is that in Section 110 dot 10, CA, you want to stop what is currently happening right now, is what I'm hearing from this.
I don't want, me, I have no personal opinion on.
I'm not asking you. That's what you're proposing, right? You're proposing in this, based on the conversation that you and I just had in front of our colleagues, that we want to stop precedent. The answer is yes. The answer, I think, is very clear for everybody here, that it's yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Hi, Mr. Morabito. Okay, so what I'm getting out of this, I, I was listening to the last comment that Counselor Silvestri made, which really resonated. So you're telling me that it's okay for somebody to come in here and say, oh, let's put up a Nazi flag? That's okay? Because there are no rules in place. I agree with Counselor Morabito. There needs to be rules, and there needs to be things set in place that, okay, they have to come in front of the council, they have to come in front of the committee, and you do have to make a decision that way. And it should be on case-by-case basis. It shouldn't be, everybody can just get a flag. It, it, it just needs, it needs, they, you need to have regulations. I don't understand what the problem is.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I apologize, Mr. Morabito, for your walking into this hornet's nest. I knew at some point this was going to happen. For several years, I've had the opinion, and I agree with Counselor Kelly, that the flag polls in front of City Hall, and this is coming from someone that attends every celebration out front, I think they're the greatest thing. I think you should have the United States Flag, the State Flag, the City Flag, and the flags of the military. Anybody can come to the front of City Hall, whether they're sanctioned by the city or they're not. You can have a protest, you can talk on a loudspeaker, you can do anything you want, you can pass out sandwiches, you can make your feelings known. So these celebrations, I want to see them continue because I enjoy every one of them. I went to the Colombian flag raising last week, I'm going to the Peruvian flag raising this week, I went to Pride, I went to Juneteenth, I went to the Christian flag raising. If someone's doing something out front, I go. But I don't think we need to involve the flag polls. They're government building, United States, state, city, military, and have our celebrations and enjoy, and enjoy everyone's company. That's my, and I've had this, this opinion for years, and I said, one day, something's going to come along here. I mean, by trying to decide which country goes up, or which group goes up, which one doesn't, then we're starting to talk ideology. And I don't think that's something we, we really need to get into. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And as I stated earlier, there's a lot to unpack here. If there is, the Supreme Court has issued a decision that we need to look at, if, you know, neighboring communities are also creating ordinance, we should have the solicitor make sure that this ordinance is not violating somebody's rights, because then that opens us up to a lawsuit. I think, you know, we've had some really wonderful flag raisings outside, and if it's safer for us to create an ordinance, then we should. But we have to do it carefully. So my recommendation is that we put this into Legislative Affairs and await an opinion from the solicitor. If anybody objects to that, okay. Counselor, Director Morabito, is there anything else that you wanted to share?
I just want to follow up on the Counselor.
Please.
Who spoke for me. Obviously, I would never do that, assume someone's, what he said was absolutely false. That was not my view. I just want to put that on record.
Absolutely.
I would never put words in someone's mouth. And I appreciate each and every one of you. Like I said, Mr. President did tell me that, I was just giving a quick, brief presentation that it would go to public hearing, and the solicitor will be here to answer legal questions. I'm no legal expert, and I just want that on expert, on record, that I can't speak legally about this, that I'm just presenting the ordinance.
Absolutely.
Before it goes to public hearing.
And not, sorry to interrupt you, but for my protection, and I think I can speak for everybody else, before I vote on anything, before I discuss anything, I feel like we're messing with freedom of speech here. It's not, again, I'm not an expert in any of that. But I, I do feel this should go to Legislative Affairs. We should get something in writing from our solicitor to give us some direction, because I, I'm actually uncomfortable even having this discussion. So we do have some people in line to speak.
Just to let you know, that this was reviewed and written by the solicitor as well. So, but he can speak to it at the public hearing or Subcommittee. Thanks.
Thank you, Director. And we do have a member of the public wishing to speak. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Ed Terrill, 70th Soul Street, Revere, Mass. My question in all this is, what are the sentiments of the city? And how are they defined? And they, it has to be explicitly put out there, because if it's not, we're definitely going to get sued. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. This is going to be referred to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number 15, communication from the Veteran Service Officer requesting a public hearing for an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for veterans' memorial polls in the city of Revere.
Just refer to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number 16, communication from the City Auditor requesting a transfer of all Wonderland Parking revenue from FY24 to the High School Stabilization Fund.
Good evening, Mr. Fiske.
Good evening, Mr. President. Rich Fiske, City CFO, 281 Broadway. Before you is a request of transferring rental car revenue and other revenue generated from the Wonderland Parking Lot into the High School Stabilization Fund that was created earlier this year. Had a lot of requests, Counselor, so we, Garino Sawaya was one of them, letting us know that, you know, be a great idea to put these revenues generated from that land into the stabilization fund. Administration tends to agree. And what you see before you is the transfer of all of those dollars into that fund for fiscal year ending 2024. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions? Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the CFO, how much money we're talking?
I believe, let me see here, grand total, $483,076.29.
I'll pay for a couple of permits, I guess. No, I think it's a great idea. I mean, every little bit's going to help.
Yeah, definitely. I think so, too. Thank you.
Anything that prevents an override.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Listen, I'm proud of my motion, and we are going to be raising many, many dollars just by this motion alone, just getting this money from the cars being parked there until it's built. So, sorry, Tony.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak? Rule call.
Shall the City Council dedicate 100% of the rental revenue collected from the so-called Wonderland site under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 64-L, to the High School Stabilization Fund established under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, effective for fiscal year 24, beginning on July 1st, '23? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haremio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski is absent. Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the motion's approved. Calendar item number 17, communication from the City Auditor relative to the Educational Technology Program ETP expenditures for the City Council Chamber AV upgrades.
Mr. CFO?
Thank you, Rich Fiske, 281 Broadway, City CFO. As you can see in the PAC, City Clerk had presented an application to the ETP Committee, requesting these funds for a new AV system for the City Council Chambers. That was approved by the Committee. And what we're doing now is just formalizing that by executing appropriation transfer from that fund into the proper account to pay for those upgrades. So happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions from the council? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 18, communication from the City Auditor relative to the FY24 year-end transfers.
Mr. Fiske.
Thank you. Yes, typically, every year that ends in July, we come before the council as we clean up our books and make all transfers that are not allowable under law by a department themselves. They can typically transfer money within their department if it's a salary-to-salary or expense-to-expense. However, when those transfers are made between departments or between salary and expense lines, a vote of the City Council is required to do so. There's a long list of the ins and outs of these transfers, and like I said, typically, we do this at the end of the year so we can see when the dust settles, what accounts need to be addressed. In some of these cases, these transfers are more than what's needed, but we know when we close the books that these funds go to the bottom line. But just to ensure that we close the books with no deficits, which this transfer will allow us to have no deficits in any of our accounts, including us knowing that. So happy to answer any questions on any of the particulars of that.
Thank you. Any counselors have questions? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 19, communication from the City Auditor relative to an appropriation for the Transportation Network Assessment.
Mr. Fiske.
Good evening. Again, this is one that this council's seen, I think it's about five years old. The, for those who don't know, the ride-share programs, Uber and Lyft in particular, every ride that's generated in the city here, we receive one penny for each, and one penny, one dime for each ride generated. So for fiscal year 2024, actually, it's a calendar year, but for calendar year 2024, the revenue generated for the city of Revere was $122,640. We've used this money typically for the purposes that it's required, which is to address and pack the transportation, municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure. This year, during budget talks, we thought it was a good idea to appropriate this money for the operation of the Blue Bike Networks in the city, as well as a lot of the traffic calming measures that are coming before you. So with that, we are looking to use this $122,640 in that manner that complies with the law and also gives us some operating funds for our Blue Bikes and alternative transportation measures, calming, road calming, et cetera. Tom's here to speak a little bit on it if there's any particular questions, but otherwise, we just need an appropriation to move those dollars.
Thank you very much, Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rich, thanks for coming. I just had one question. Where did the 10 cents per ride come from? Is that a state-generated?
Yeah, I think it's a state law that's passed through to the cities, and as a receipt reserve for appropriation, they require us to come before the legislative bodies.
So that's uniform for the whole state, 10 cents? We couldn't go up to like 13 cents?
No, yeah, there's no local option to increase it. Right now, it's 10 cents, but yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Just to, do you know if that's, if the ride originates in the city, or if it's dropped off here?
If it originates.
Okay. Going to start taking Uber to council meetings. Thank you.
Well, just to put it in context, that's 1.22 million rides that generated in the city for 2023, so.
One point, wow. Any other? One point, wow. Any other counselors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 20, communication from the city auditor requesting a transfer from the Cable Access Receipt Reserve Fund to Riviera TV invoices.
Counselors, anyone have any questions? I didn't think so. All in favor? All opposed?
Calendar item number 21, communication from the city auditor relative to the Community Improvement Trust Transfer for McEnfield Cleanup and Rehabilitation.
Any counselors have questions?
I have one question.
Counselor Agenzio?
The Community Improvement Trust Fund, that's usually broken up by ward, right? So, is this coming out of a particular ward, or just from the general?
It is coming out of the Ward 1 Counselor's apportionment of that Community Improvement Trust Fund. Right now, we're closing the books. And I was going to get everybody's balance as of June 30th, as we close the books right now. But we've, we've, we've confirmed that there's more than enough money in Counselor McKenna's CIT fund for this, for this transfer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22, communication from the city auditor relative to the Community Improvement Trust Transfer for Oak Island Park Improvements.
Any counselors have questions? Counselor Garino Sawaya?
I'm very excited that we're going to finally have the floor done at Oak Island Park. And I want to thank the planning and development for taking that and going with it and trying, and getting a grant for $199,000. So, I only have $44,000 coming out of the CIT trust fund in Ward 5. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Thank you, everybody.
Calendar item number 23, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Rocky Graziano to the Cultural Council.
Refer to appointments.
Calendar item number 24, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Bill Reedy to the Council on Elder Affairs.
Refer to appointments.
Calendar item number 25, communication from the mayor relative to an act authorizing the city of Riviera to pay a certain sum of money to Denise Materia Kondeli, widow of school committee man, Anthony Materia.
Request to suspend the rules. All in favor? All opposed? And unless there's any questions, take a roll call.
Shall the city council approve an act authorizing the city of Riviera to pay a certain sum of money to Denise Materia Kondeli, widow of school committee man, Anthony Materia? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haremio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna? Yes. Counselor Novoselsky is absent. Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. And Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. The special legislation has been approved.
Back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number 26, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Mary Vigliotta to the Council on Elder Affairs.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 27, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Arthur Pelton to the zoning board of appeals.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 28, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Thomas Carlton to the Conservation Commission.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 29, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Amelia Fiske to the Conservation Commission.
I don't know about this one. I'm just getting appointments.
On to motions. Calendar item number 30, motion presented by Counselor Novoselsky that the mayor requests the Traffic Commission to authorize the installation of speed bumps in the vicinity of 29 Franklin Ave and 139 Campbell Ave. Traffic calming measures are required as speeding is a major complaint of the neighbors in this area.
Counselor Novoselsky is not here tonight, but he has asked if the council would be able to vote this out favorably for him this evening. All in favor? All opposed? I'm sorry, we do, never mind.
Calendar item number 31, motion presented by Counselor President Cogliandro that the mayor requests the chief of police to install a traffic camera at the intersection of Cushman Ave and Adams Street on pole number 1370.
Permission to speak from the chair? I'm just, you know what, I'm going to just go ahead and let the resident who lives directly in the middle of that intersection speak on my behalf. Thank you. Go, name and address for the record, ma'am.
Thank you again. My name is Suzie Kevorkian, and I'm at 205 Cushman Ave. I don't want to reiterate, but I forgot to add in this motion number four that we, well, agenda number four, and now we're in agenda number 31. Can we also add crosswalks? I forgot to mention that earlier in my, when I was basically speaking of safety and speeding and all the traffic violation that occurs at this intersection. If we can, we don't have any crosswalks, both on both sides, one on each side of, left and right of my property, and also at, I think there is one at Adams Street, but I don't know it by heart. So, it would be three, like, like this. So, left, east, west, and then the south, we don't have crosswalks, just in addition to this motion to install cameras.
So, just, just so you, for your information, ma'am, and I know we've discussed this previously, the switch to, switching the direction of a street or making it one-way in crosswalks, those are all decisions of the Traffic Commission. So, as counselors, we can file a motion? The end decision is theirs. That consists of the chief of police, fire engineer, city planner, DPW. So, just so you know, but more than happy to do that.
Just crosswalks in addition, that'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. On the, on the motion in regards to the camera, again, this is all part of traffic calming. I think that intersection point was made by the resident earlier that you get to the top of that hill and you don't stop, maybe you, you roll up to the top so you can see, because a car parks on that corner all the time. I don't even want to know how many near misses you guys see every day. So, on that note, all, anyone else? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 32, motion presented by Counselor Haremio that the mayor requests Mastot to install a fence along the middle of Squire Road extending from 35 Squire Road to 407 Squire Road in the interest of public safety. Counselor Zambudo is recorded as recused from this motion.
Counselor Yarumio?
Mr. President, thank you. We've heard a lot about the unfortunate pedestrian accidents happening on Squire Road. I've had a conversation with at least one of our colleagues here who is going to present, to which I'm amenable. And so, I will say that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino?
I'm not in favor of fences on Squire Road for a few reasons. First of all, the landscape on Squire Road in the last couple of years has been looking pretty good. We went from having all weeds, four-foot-high weeds down there for, as I remember, till having a landscaped. There's sprinkler systems in there, and the, just for the maintenance reasons, for the landscape, cutting the grass and stuff. I'd like this, you know, look into this a little
Thank you, Counselor. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. So, I share Squire Road as a Ward 3 with Counselor Janino and Ward 6. One of the things that I'm thinking of is the businesses on that, on Squire Road pay a premium to be seen by X amount of cars. I recall potentially moving my business to Squire Road years ago, the rents were so high because of the number of cars that go by and putting a fence up would eliminate a lot of that traffic, a lot of the ability to see. There, again, there's plumbing under there, there's, the landscaping is beautiful now. There are crosswalks that people can safely cross. I do it often, going to the Wellness Center. And I would, I mean, I'm not 100% in, on board with this fence, but I am willing to refer it to public safety for further discussion.
Mr. President, sorry.
Yep, Counselor, go ahead.
Before referring to public safety, I'd like to add to the motion after the word Mastot to say, request Mastot to conduct a feasibility study on a pedestrian footbridge somewhere on Squire Road between 35 and 407 Squire Road.
Forgive me, but where would you think?
I don't know. That's for Mastot to decide. That's why we're asking for a feasibility study. That's why, that's why the amendment is.
Madam Clerk is all set with that?
This is prior to referring to public safety.
If we're just asking for a feasibility study on a footbridge, I'd be apt to vote yes on it right now. So, instead of referring it, I don't know how the rest of the council feels. Okay. So, on the motion as amended, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 33, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the mayor requests the building commissioner to develop a procedure checklist for residents wanting to do work on their property. The list should include permit types, requirements, and other departments that may need to issue permits, such as the Conservation Commission, DPW, ZBA, or city council.
Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in the last month alone, I've had three residents, actually, four, counting today, come to me. I rate that they have gone to the building department to seek information on permitting. Although they were given the proper information, they were not given the various departments that they may also need to seek information from. When they begin the work, they don't realize that they may need to seek other approvals, such as a negative determination from the Conservation Commission, because they live in a flood zone or near the Ram Niamash. This causes residents a lot of dilemma, because they have already begun the project, believing that it's okay to do so. So, this should not be happening. In this day and age, we should be able to inform residents of the proper procedures that need to be taken in order to complete their projects. Therefore, I am requesting that once a resident comes to the building department seeking a permit, and particularly for fencing, walls, or driveways, they are giving a, a list with other phone numbers and emails that they may be required to contact in respect to their residential areas. Conservation laws are most strictly enforced in areas of the flood plains and flood zones and rivers and Ram Niamash, and they can, because they can cause damage to surrounding homes. So, it's really, really important that this checklist be made, and they know exactly where to go. I have spoken to the building department, and I think they are in the process of making this checklist for me. So, I just want to make sure that it becomes, it comes into fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak? I think this is a great motion. We have a resident, sir. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Anthony Pazziali, 51 Arcadia Street. This happens a lot in Oak Island. Five of my neighbors have pavement driveways that they shouldn't have had, and they had to work out deals, well, just at drip edges, to make conservation happy. What I would really like to see, and I don't know if it's within this council's power, or if you guys could ask the mayor or whoever, why give out the permit until everything's been checked off? So, start with the building department. Building says, okay. DPW says, okay. Then the next, as she has the checklist, but you don't get the permit until you go and get your condition, order of condition from the Conservation Committee. Then you get your permit. Because my neighbor, this just happened last week, my neighbor Pam just put in a driveway, and then she had conservation in her house. She's like, I didn't know. I have a permit that says I can build. So, I would, instead of, the checklist idea is great, and the council's on the right path. I'd like to see the permit not hand, or not delivered, or not received until every, every board or everybody that, what I'm trying to say is, we should know. If I go to pull a permit and say, Arcadia Street, they should go, oh, well, you, that's a flood zone. You need to go see this. No permit until then. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Counselor Yarumio?
Yeah, I think this is a really great motion, in that we need to constantly inform our residents of what the checklist, I, I don't know, the councilwoman from the point of eyes is amenable to this, but maybe we can add something in here about being posted on their city website and the building department's web section. So, great idea. I love this.
On the motion?
We should amend on that.
On the motion?
Add that.
On the motion as amended, all in favor? All opposed?
Calendar item number 34, motion presented by counselors Novoselsky and Garino Sawaya that the mayor reinstate the outside water meter program to allow seniors to monitor water usage outside without adding the sewer charge. The water department should provide seniors with an acceptable outside adapter for under $40 to enable them to take the meter to the water department for proper credit.
Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Thank you. I have spoken to Superintendent Chris Charmella on this, and there's quite a few issues regarding these outside meters. So, if, if it's okay with the rest of the council, I would like to send it to my elder affairs committee, so the elderly can come in and speak to Mr. Charmella. He has agreed to come and speak with them on possible options that they can have other than that outside meter.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also spoke to a few seniors about this, and I also spoke to the DPW super about this. And it seems that the city is kind of getting away from the, the physical meters. Like a lot of surrounding cities and towns, they're going more to the automated plan where you pick up the meter. It's a little bit more expensive. You have to have a plumber come out to the house, and I think the meter costs about $430, maybe. But from what I was told, the city's looking to get away from the resident bringing the actual meter, excuse me, to the, to the water department. And I guess there were a lot of issues with the residents leaving them out over the winter, them freezing, cracking, and they weren't giving accurate readings. So, there were some issues with the physical meters. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also spoke to several seniors about this, so I'm wondering, and I know there were problems with going, this was in use at one point, and they stopped it for a number of reasons. I think Counselor Sawaya said there were a number of issues that came up, and that's why they would discontinue. So, I'd love that for, to have a discussion with them and see maybe if there's even any discounts or something that we could possibly give to the seniors, so that they can have some type of relief here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselor? Garino Sawaya?
Counselor Kelly, that is exactly what we were looking at, is trying to give them a specific discount just for seniors, if that's going to be feasible. Thank you.
Unless there's any opposition to putting this into the elder affairs subcommittee, that's where I will refer it to.
Calendar item number 35, motion presented by Counselor Agenzio that the mayor requests National Grid to install a support pole at the corner of Yeuman Street and Warren Street. The current distance between the existing poles on the west side of Yeuman Street do not allow for wires servicing the east side of Yeuman Street to be the required height over the street, causing trucks to pull wires off homes on a, on a consistent basis.
Counselor Agenzio?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as it states here in the, in the motion, the distance from one side to the other is too great, so the wires sag, and they're not at the required 14 feet off the street. So, those homes on the west side have, excuse me, the east side have suffered them being torn down quite, quite frequently. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Maybe the mayor can also request that National Grid start showing up to meetings. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 36, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the mayor requests DCR to install and extend a quiet zone signage on Riviera Beach Boulevard from its current terminus to Kerry Circle.
Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Part of Riviera Beach has quiet zone signs up. And this particular part of Riviera Beach is like after the restaurants. And what's happening is, after the police come down and they tell everybody to disperse, a lot of the cars are congregating in front of these home, this residential area, coming from, say, Antonias all the way to the circle. And what's happening is they're playing their music, and they're disturbing the residents that live there. So, I'm requesting that DCR have quiet zone signs just put up there for these residents, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Silvestri?
Is there, are they not holding to ordinance through you to the council? Are they not holding to ordinance to, to the state police? Because they usually come down, kick them off, and they Because they usually come down, kick them off, and they even tow cars.
They're moving down further where the police don't go.
Okay.
Thank you, councillor. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 37, motion presented by councillor Silvestri that the mayor requests the traffic commission, in conjunction with the city's policy writer and analyst, to develop an enforcement and confiscation mechanism for Section 10.16.171, operation of motorized scooters prohibited of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere. As written, the traffic regulation is unenforceable.
Councillor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the motion speaks for themselves. I know the, the chief was up here a few weeks ago, and we spoke about this, and he described how hard it is to, to really police this, but I've been getting call after call after call. I'm watching people zoom in and out, going up the wrong way. One gentleman jumped up on the sidewalk the other day to get around a bus. Boston, I know they're a lot bigger police department, but they do also have a lot bigger space. They did a sting the other night, they rounded, I think there was something like 20 arrests, 20 bikes taken for non-registered, non-insured. So I think there's something that has to be done. We have to send a message that they just can't run free through the city. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor, I just want to let you know, the mayor did let me know today that we did confiscate five scooters today, so. We're, we're, yes, round of applause, absolutely.
See how fast my motions work?
Teach me, councillor, how to do that. On the motion, councillor Janino?
Just for the record, it was eight towed, 10 citations, and two arrests.
We have no further business.
Mr. President?
Councillor McKenna?
I'd like to make a point of personal privilege, please.
State your point, councillor.
I'd like to give a shout out to the DPW, Bill Guanasso, Steve Penta, Michael Wells, Mike Wells, Michael Wells' son, and Nick S. for going above and beyond, cutting overgrown tree pits and grass on Winthrop and Crescent Ave, well past 6:30 on a Friday night. Thank you very much. And it looks beautiful.
Thank you, councillor. We will be adjourned, and our next meeting is Monday, August 26th. Thank you all for being here tonight. Have a good night.